Okay, thank you for this panel of pleasure audience. I have a quick disclaimer before we start this evening. The first segment is not responsible for content and fill proceedings nor for the responsibility or test of the accuracy or the completion or completeness of the product. The first of all our business is the acceptance events for July seventeen.
I'll make it.
All in favor?
Hi.
I'll give you some town meeting deeds that are coming up. Tomorrow, August fifteenth, we have the HK Rent Authority appointments will be held at a town meeting at the town hall here at six thirty. We also have easements that are going to be discussed at that town meeting as well for the property around these lodges property.
Yeah.
Okay. The public carrying, that's at six thirty. Public carrying date for the Committee on Civic Pride to discuss their five proposal is August twenty-second, also at six thirty at the town hall. Okay, I gave you copies of all of these reports. There's a couple of comments on the first one, but you haven't seen your center report. I'll go through that a little more carefully with if I may. Heat wave was a big issue at the center. They were open as a cooling center, but with a few new faces just up again. July saw the implementation of the first elects required emergency contact form. Other than the writer, no one has filled out this form as yet. September, when the center becomes more active, we will be a real test for compliance. There has been pushback regarding personal information request. I'm going to have to reaffirm this with the senior center manager. This is, it's not optional. We have to have it through legal and from insurance standpoint. If someone chooses not to fill out the form, we can just keep their name and the note out there that they don't want to fill out the form. It basically requires a text kid, contact, telephone numbers. The personal information that's required is insurance information, name of the insurance company. Maybe that they have to be admitted. That will speed up the admission process. So I'm going to reaffirm that with the senior center director, or excuse me, manager.
No, so that's an open primary insurance.
That's correct. Okay, a little further on down, I think those aren't the state with the things that are going on there at the, at the center. And the last one, last paragraph in here says, "I volunteered to help with the community center refurbishing with the hope that the center might move there from its temporary location in the future." We had to discuss that. It's not a possibility. We discussed some other possibilities, but that is not a possibility. I'll have to reaffirm that to him as well.
That's our next question.
Yeah. Okay, the installation note report is purely self-explanatory. Let's see, only one thing of note there. That's what's interesting is a thank you goes out to State Representative Miller for breaking the logjam at the Department of Agriculture, holding up senior farmer's market nutritional program check notes. So kudos. Okay, we have the annual Haddam Animal Patrol, well, monthly Haddam Animal Patrol report, which reads more exciting every month. And I am constantly amazed at the type of things that we are involved with from the animal standpoint. We've got bats, we've got, yeah, we've got some bats. We've got pit bulls, we've got, basically, you know, you name it, it's in here. The bottom line, however, is that there is good communication with our animal control officer and the, did you get a copy of that? I apologize for not going through it. There's good communication with her. She's extremely responsible. So for the first time, we're really getting, you know, some additional revenue from licenses. We've had some fines and fees that we were able to get, and we have a much better control of our animal situation than we ever had in the past. A couple of towns have approached us to do a regionalized setup. Durham is one, East Haddam is another. I'm going to look at it and let you guys know how it looks, but frankly, I'm happy with the way things are going and it's not too expensive. And I think any regional effort we're going to make is probably going to cost us money. So I'll keep you posted on that. Any questions on the patrol?
Tell me how you, I included my son, help me catch him.
No, that was a good move.
That's true, help me catch him.
This was a dead bat, so, that's okay. That had to be tested. Any questions on the animal patrol law? Discussion? All right, the Connecticut State Police continues.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah, I got state police.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, thank you. You got state police, okay, these pieces, the patrol checks are up to two twenty-six. Thank God, no fadals. And we only, on the area, only have one burglary, which is great. And there's one category I want to take a look at and talk to probably the repo boss. It's a category called citizen, and I'm not sure what that entails. That went up, and I'm not sure.
Significantly higher?
I'm sorry?
Significantly higher?
No, but it's just, I noticed it went to twenty-nine, and I'm not sure why that is. That could be a good thing, that they're getting more, you know, direct activity, or there might be some other problems with the pot check, which you guys will watch and notice about that. More available warnings, only twenty. More available accidents with the DWD, DWD, WDI, excuse me, zero. So it's not a bad, it's not a bad report. They continue to do these spot checking for speeding, and we've got a couple more rules to add to that since the last time I got phone calls. I love Little City going over, up the turn, going up toward Skunk Misery in that area. And also, and down by the one fifty-four, where the paving is just, is just a finish that is starting to speed up there. So I'll brief it first.
What has happened with that group though, is can you talk about creative ways of slowing people down to sell them?
It is, it is a continuing process. The ideas have had to fall in, have had to come in. Some of the information has been given with DOT, for instance, maybe some parallel parking, some, some, some other things are going to be incorporated as the, as the paving continues and also as the bridge comes in next year. So there is, there is activity going down there.
Yeah, Liz was here, and the other gentleman's been here, some ideas.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All those ideas are, you know, in the package, and DOT is looking at them to see what they know what they think. But they've been very difficult on crossings, the hard access, new crossings, the school, and, but some of the other things, the one fifty-four going toward the downtown area in Haggan, there's a different blocking area.
I would hear.
Okay. Okay, now, what should we accept, of course?
Oh, next.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, and some correspondence, we have various correspondence. The Regional District Seventeen is not here. Right. Okay, correspondence. We have a letter from the registrar of voters. I won't go through the letter entirely, you guys have a copy of it. But basically, the bottom line is that the Haddam Registrar of Voters have not requested any increases for the past six years. They are comparatively speaking, every other town in the area and in a region of lowest pay. They want us to consider increasing the wages, and I would recommend that we do, take this in advance and put it into the budget hearing for next year and.
Consider it for our next year.
For our next, for next year's budget.
Like we would anyone's.
Yeah, yeah.
I just don't want to be singling them out.
No.
Around on other people's town, asking for.
Right, this is a letter to us, so that's why I informed the correspondence. But that's by recommendation, we invited back, say thank you, and we'll put it into the budget consideration.
Consider it.
See you later, Tom. Okay. Okay, we got some good news from CCM under Product Prescription Discount Card Program. The results I thought I'd share with you. We're up considerably. Haddam standings for July is fifty-three percent. Over eighty prescription claims have been processed to date, and Haddam's residents have saved over forty-seven hundred dollars. Yeah, that's our prescriptions.
He was maybe successful, that's.
Yeah, that's pretty good, huh?
Yeah. How many, did they have, like, how many people use them?
One, two, let's see, we got total claims, eighty-two, eighty-two claims.
Forty-seven hundred.
Forty-seven hundred. So these are some heavy-duty medications that are involved, people are using it for it, which is really good.
Five dollars per person?
Pretty good. So that's good, that's, this program is working. This program is working. Here again, I'd like to, I've been invited to talk to the Club Sixty folks, and I'm not sure, I think at some point in time, we should, we should, we could be senior center folks as well, push this even more because the program is beginning to work, everybody should know about it. Okay, we have collectively, all three of us have been invited to the Field of Flags display at the Haggan Congregational Church. They'll be setting up on Friday, August twenty-third at nine to noon, and they have a dedication during the nine AM church service on August twenty-fifth. The flags will be displayed until September seventeenth. So if you guys can stop by or want to go to the service or something, it's, they're going to, they're going to set up again on Friday, August twenty-third at nine noon, and they're going to have an actual dedication service at nine o'clock on the twenty-fifth. And that's the Congregational Church, First Congregational Church, Haggan Congregational Church, which is right down the road. That was beautiful last year, that. Okay, we have discussed this already, and if I signed off on it, really doesn't take, doesn't need a, you know, even though both of you signed off on it, doesn't need a vote of any type, but this is the notice from Bill Bowles with regard to the, the first annual Haddam community concert to help on Friday night in September. So basically, to contact everybody, please contact and call this on board with regard to closure of cannibals in a short period of time, and so this is going forward. Okay, we have a, collectively, all three of us have an email from Ed Schwing with regard to the transit bus stop signs. He reads, "It has been brought to our attention that the bus stop signs for the nine-town transit had been removed along one fifty-four. Do you have any information on this?" We looked into it, I looked into it, and basically, the signs were initially posted at the request of the nine-town transit to help kick the thing off, the program off. They were, they were formal stop signs, or bus stop signs. They were more meant to be, they had a word to be, that the buses are going to combine, and if you want, this would be an easy place to stop. The program calls for what they call the flex route, which means anywhere up one fifty-four, you can just step off your porch and wait and the bus will stop. So it doesn't necessarily require stop, stop signs. I asked the Public Works why they took them down, and they indicated that it was the things at the request of our zoning enforcement officer because of a complaint from an individual with regard to his irritation with the signs and a utility company in the past, and a utility company never stands for it, make long story short, he threatened to, you know, bring some serious activity and lawsuits. So we started researching it, and the signs were required, were requested by the nine-town transit. They never filed for permits for them, so Public Works took them down. I talked with the nine-town transit coordinator, and said, "Look, if you want signs," and he said, "Well, they would be helpful, they're not essential." I said, "All right, well, why don't you get together with our Public Works guy, see where a safe area for these signs are, make your formal permits, your applications with DOT, and then we'll, you know, we'll walk through this with you." I'm not sure if they want to go through that much trouble or not, but that is the process. Based on that complaint, we really can't leave the signs up there the way they do it.
Yeah, we need something, I mean, those signs being out there permanently alert everyone to root.
Well, it's on, we have, we have the brochures, we have the, we have a link to nine-town transit on our, on our website, and it's basically a flex route, you could go anywhere on one fifty-four.
I'm sorry, informing people of, I mean, do we send the brochures out? We don't send them out.
The nine-town transit will respond to directly to one two.
No, I mean, how does?
We have, we have.
How would Julian know if it exists if it was inside?
Well, there's been, there's been plenty of publicity on it. It's been, we have it on the website, we have the brochures, all of the other brochures at the town hall.
Somebody wouldn't know, there's no, there's no direct notification to their house?
No.
But I think.
Yeah, no, if they want, if they want to.
We should effort with them to, we can get a backup.
Yeah, if they, if they think it's a good idea, don't forget, that's their responsibility with the DOT to do the permits and to get it, and to get it, and to get it done. I mean, I think it's a great facility, and it's really been used significantly, it's been used by, interestingly enough, by a lot of young people. Those who are working out of the area and a lot of special education things and stuff like that, so.
What I'm saying.
So it's not just a senior thing.
It's a service, it's a service to our citizens, I mean, we, I mean, putting on a website's fine, paying for it's fine, but we need to inform people so if this, I would think the website and it's not efficient way to notify everybody that our citizens and services that's available. Those signs are great, because they're out there, and they're good seeing, because everyone asks about them, if they came to our meetings and this and that.
Well, they have to be in a safe, they have to be, obviously, they have to be in a safe place.
I think, or you think, all right, we should do what we can to make it happen, help them along, get those signs back up there.
I would agree with that.
But I'm saying, I feel like, my position is, I want to have them.
But you're not the owner of the company.
No, but I want to tell my people in town that there's a, that there's a route.
That the company is responsible for.
Yeah, but it's a service, but I want the people to know. How else are they going to know?
They're responsible for advertising their product. Yeah, well, I think, I think we can all, I think we can all agree, it's a good service, it's good for Haddam, but we should do our best to make sure that folks know about it. And we'll, and Public Works will work with, with the transit folks to make sure that they go through, identify safe areas and have them make their applications with DOT, and we'll do whatever we can.
I still want them to feel that it's not there, if Haddam's unfriendly, we don't want to, we're not cooperating with them, someone complained, we took them down, so.
Well, I think they were more.
They want them to feel that we're, we're against them.
Yeah, they don't put signs up everywhere. Okay, and I think they were more, they more love to get the, kickstart the program.
Right.
But they don't have signs everywhere because they are, they call it a flex route, and you can just kind of step up and do that. But I think it's good, we ought to help them as much as we can. So I'll give you a little bit. So Ed, whoever, you know, brought it to your attention, that's the story on it.
Okay, I'll have it to Public Council.
Okay, we have another, this came, all three of us as well, from the Haddam Bulletin. It is a note to Bruno to understand that the WFS has missed one of the dates set in stipulation, namely the June first, two thousand thirteen, regarding the construction of the culvert requested by the wetlands commission on return to Hillbrook. They also understand that our town attorney, as town attorney, you have been made aware of this fact. One of the actions contemplated by the town, not the WFS, has complied with, has complied with the stipulation, has not complied with stipulation, excuse me. I read the stipulation at the town clerk yesterday, and it calls for serious action at some points. I looked into this today, I talked with Bruno, and I talked with Liz and Jacobson, and basically, the bottom, the bottom line on this is that they were late in putting that culvert together. It's just about through now, but I wrote to Bruno today and said, "I got your telephone message. Because we are operating under a legal agreement, my feeling is that all responses to that agreement should be made from your office. P and Z is pretty much out of the picture as the responsibilities have been transferred to the stipulation. Jacobson is the monitoring agent to ensure compliance, and Liz Glynn is acting as the coordinator to follow the process. The stipulation routes are precisely laid out, and if any of them are not followed, the penalties should automatically be assessed. Suggest Jacobson and Liz give you the exact dates of the culvert installation, and you formally assess the stipulated leak fees accordingly." Okay, so that's where we are, you know, with that. And I believe, I didn't photocopy it, but I believe that Bruno did possibly reply directly to you.
Correct.
Yeah.
I have a comment about that, any topic comment?
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's the end of the correspondence. Let me go see any. Additions and transfers. A request from Georgia, financial director, basically, please request the board of finance to make the following additions to twelve thirteen budget year from line item eighty-four, eight thousand, eighty thousand, pardon me, contingency. An addition of a thousand ninety-four dollars, nine cents to line item fifty-eight, two twenty-four oh one of the building compartment mileage. And what that was, was a change in the mileage amount to, as a result of the IRS audit that had the, we had to change the mileage to, to salaries as a result, there was some additional cost of repair and that, the way that social security and some other things, so that, so that basically went up. An addition of forty-two thousand, nine eighty-three, ninety-six to line item twenty-one, oh nine, five hundred, insurance anthem, blue cross, town meeting required. Okay, if you, I left a copy of the items in here, if you'll see here, the bottom line is that anthem blue cross was really substantially more, and it was offset by different amounts. Bottom line is forty-two thousand dollars.
So it's forty-two thousand higher than we anticipated?
That's right.
And when did, when did that happen?
Throughout the year.
I mean, is it a program?
This is the, well, we're on a self-insured program, so it's basically the claims and the, and the.
Administration.
Administration, yeah. Administration's only forty-eight thousand dollars, the total program, so that's all. This is all claims.
So what did we anticipate, what do we have there, do you know? Put that spot.
No, it's okay, the working budget was three hundred and three thousand, and then together, three hundred seventy-seven thousand.
For the administration?
No, for administration, it's only forty-eight thousand a piece.
So what's the addition for?
This, this, see the three oh three over here? Okay, that's what we, that's what we anticipated, this was the current year expenditures was three seventy-seven.
The self-insured.
That's what they are.
So it's not for insurance?
No, this is the bills, this also self-insured program. If you take forty-eight thousand dollars out of that, three seventy-seven, that's the actual cost.
But she's saying for insurance anthem blue cross, but it's not.
Well, that's, yeah, that's basically what it is.
The way to want that.
Right.
Yeah.
Should, should, should be for paying for services for that?
No, paying for dollars in, dollars out of claims.
Yeah, well, the services by the, by providing medical, services by the medical.
Yeah. So that is, that's that one. And then the last one is an addition of fifty-nine, fifty-five, sixty-one to line item sixty-three oh five oh two, which is general maintenance vehicle fuel. And that one is just, believe it or not, increased, increased prices. The usage is up slightly, but, you know, the, the, the line item, that just cost more a few dollars the last year than we anticipated. If you want to go back a little bit to the twelve thirteen discussions and negotiations, we had it a little higher, and the board of finance was.
We did.
Too high, they got the backs, not paying for it.
We did anticipate that, remember that one? We did anticipate that one.
Yeah. So if I can get your approval on this to pursue this time, the board of finance, then if they, if they.
Self-insured.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Then once we read the other seven, I'll be. Okay, tonight, we had a, we visited last, the last time we met with regard to the fire station number one boiler replacement. And if you remember, we were asking for some changes last time with regard to reallocating the capital, non-recurring transfers. And there were several questions that came up at that point in time, and just to refresh it a little bit, Sean, you were concerned that perhaps the, because that money was available, it was just going to be used as, as a vehicle to use it.
No, I didn't know what they wanted. What was wrong, like, was it replaced with money savings, failing?
Okay, all right.
I mean, because what was presented was, we want to replace it without explanation of why. I'm reading through this, which is giving some explanation of why.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was failed or didn't work, or we, or what, you said about fit, wasn't efficient.
Okay.
We didn't have that, but now, now we've got.
I read, yeah.
We were asking.
Okay. We had this last meeting. Okay, great. All right, also, there was a question with regard to propane and the not fuel, and why the station is only ten years old and the, and the boiler had to be replaced, if I recall. And I think those were the two main concerns that you had. And that's about it. Now, we have with us tonight, Mr. Anderson is going to give us a letter of explanation on that boiler replacement, and Sam, Sam is also here to give us some background as well. So where would you like to start?
I'll just introduce myself, John Anderson, HVAC contractor over in Mudus. I can take care of the fire station and some of the work for the town for past several years. And when I first visited the firehouse, I noticed that it's a, it's a building that's really built for a fire station that's manned three hundred sixty-five days out of the year, you know, three shifts, the whole nine yards. So it's a, it's quite a built-up firehouse. The boilers that are in there are commercial boilers, and we're actually running two commercial boilers, three hundred sixty-five days out of the year, for domestic hot water, even during the summertime, just for domestic hot water, for nearly an empty building, most of the time. So looking at the, since two thousand ten, there's been quite a few significant repairs to the boilers, and that's because of age, they're running three hundred sixty-five days out of the year, and to find out how we can save the town some money. By replacing one of those boilers with a propane tank, now we can put a non-condensing boiler in that has a turn-down ratio of five to one, where we can actually go all the way down to a hundred sixty thousand BTUs to help maintain more even temperature, save energy. We're not going to have standby losses because a condensing boiler has next to zero standby losses. You walk into that boiler room at any day of the year, and it's like a thousand degrees in there, and that's because we're firing seven gallon per hour boilers to maintain domestic hot water, and all we're doing is we're heating boilers and waiting for a call for domestic hot water. So I'm trying to find a way that we can save the town some money, costs a little money to do it, as you can see by my quote, but I think in the long run, if we put in propane, it's more efficient, we can get a condensing boiler that's ninety-four point six percent efficient, where you're not going to get a commercial oil boiler to do that. Basically, the oil boilers that are in there are eighty-two percent efficient, but because of the standby losses, you have another, you take another two percent off of that, so you have standard eighty percent boilers. And that's if, that's if we could, if we have full load on those boilers. Right now, they're, I have them running on blow fire. It's hard to say what they're going to be burning at, you know, you can't even, can't even say that it's going to be half of that, because a burn won't give you that information for the burns that will fire. But I think if we have a boiler that's in there that we can run off of propane, we can get that turn-down ratio, along with that, put in a commercial hot water heater. A commercial hot water heater will be just a direct back hot water heater to maintain the domestic hot water during the summertime, spring, and fall, we can actually shut the boilers off and not have. We can actually shut the boilers off and not have, you know, any boilers running at all, just the hot water heater, the domestic hot water. And also, in here, I looked at the primary pumps that are on those two boilers, and we can save approximately fourteen hundred dollars a year in electric bills just by shutting those off for that hundred and eighty days out of the year. So I think there's quite a, quite a bit of savings that we can save. We're only going to change one boiler at this point to help some of those savings. We'll take the other boiler, leave it there, and through the building automation, which I can program, I'll only bring that out in the event that the propane boiler that's rated at eight hundred thousand BTUs can't keep up with the load. But for the past couple of years, I've had both boilers running on low fire, and they've been maintaining the building on the coal estate of the year. So I think with the propane boiler, eight hundred thousand, five to one turn-down ratio, it's going to maintain that building for what we have, for the load that you have here. Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
When, yeah, breaking the projects up to the boiler and for the heat and then the hot water, you put them together, they have, trying to determine whether they both need to be done? You talked to, you've talked both at the same time?
Yes.
About the efficiency, but it sounded like you were saying, well, the hot water is a different project than the...
Sir, what happens is that right now, we're running two, those two boilers. There's a two boiler indirect hot water heater. An indirect hot...
And, and...
And an indirect, right. So those two boilers are maintaining an indirect hot water heater. And then we're, you know, when there's a call for domestic hot water, when that indirect hot water heater temperature goes down, it ramps up the temperature of the boilers.
Okay.
So it's, by separating those two out, we can shut those boilers off, and we just have a separate eighty gallon direct vent hot water heater to maintain the domestic hot water. Standalone. So this way, we keep the boilers off, we don't have to worry about, you know, keeping a, you know, the second boiler going.
Is it on demand?
No, it's not on demand. The reason why I'm afraid about putting it on demand, it would be nice to put it on demand in, but we do have the community center that's going to require some kind of storage of hot water that, you know, they're using kitchens and stuff like that. We want to make sure that we have enough storage capacity where we're going to have enough hot water to go out there.
Do you know, do you know the, I don't know, if you guys know, how often, how often would hot water be needed? I mean, you've analyzed on demand, I'm saying, because on demand sounds exactly the most efficient to save.
Right. But this is, next best thing, put a commercial hot water heater in.
But there'll still be some waste there, because they'll be heating hot water maybe a week and no one's using it, or two weeks, no one's using it.
Right. But it's an eighty gallon storage tank, and it's, you know, blast line. We're not going to have really too much standby losses. The hot water is circulated throughout the building all the time. And so we're putting, you know, a hundred and twenty degree water right there. So this is, just to get it away from the boilers and...
Using, using on demand wouldn't, wouldn't be able to supply enough when it's needed?
That's what I'm afraid of. You know, it's, it's nice if you just had, you know, if it was just for the bathrooms and the sinks and stuff like that, but a fire station, but I'm worried about the, it's also the same hot water heater for the community center.
Okay. Any other questions?
How long, I didn't see anything in here where, besides efficiency. You mentioned, it's not, it's not like this, there's a, the new, the current boiler isn't failing, it's just inefficient. You changed it inefficient, not failing. Mike, go to, I follow a question, the one you're proposing, what's the life of that?
Right. Here it is, right here, the warranty on the new boiler is...
We've got a weird question. Why are we replacing on demand?
I'm sure I had it quoted.
While he's looking for that, most of the repairs to these existing boilers.
And what's happening, the boilers are getting to an age where those costly repairs are becoming more frequent. And that's because they're running three hundred and sixty-five years out of the year. Yes, they are ten years old, but it's not like our boilers at home where they're only running for one season.
And a new one you're proposing would be, what's its life? I just, I know you can't quote daddy.
Yeah. I'm not really sure, but they're, they're a proven boiler. You're going in everywhere. Oh, no. I'm going to say they're good for, you know, fifteen, twenty years. And the warranty is...
Same as seven thousand, at least long enough to...
Right.
At least has to be ten years to get a life.
Well, this is, again, now, this is money that is there, it's not, we're not acquiring, you know, in funds, moving some boundary current around.
Just on a side note for that, we have the money appropriated through the board of finance over long-range capital. And we already have part of it started there, so the money's going to continually come into there out of the board of finance. We're just looking to take money that has been allocated, that we've been using on other projects to speed that process up, to get us there, you know, sooner. And then obviously, that would stop the incoming of whatever else was in the long-range capital into that account.
And there is a ten-year limited warranty on the boiler.
But that doesn't necessarily, like...
No, no.
Paul, is it the re-improvement disclosed to the board of finance?
It's supposed to be important, but we're vetting it right now, basically.
And because of its dollar value, it's going to be on demand.
Well, I don't think it has to do with town reading, because this is not, it's a non-reoccurring transfer. But it has to be put by the board of finance.
We don't have to decide that now, after the board of finance can decide.
Yeah, my understanding is it's not, it's not new, it's not new money that is being allocated, so therefore it doesn't have to go, but I, you know, we could, we could double shift that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it has to ask the board of finance before that's determined.
Yeah. Taking a look at the synopsis, which we started looking at on July third. Line seventeen ninety-two hundred, volunteer car department ply movement at station two and three is twenty-five thousand dollars. The ply movement system has already been installed in station, at station three. Line nineteen, seventeen ninety-two hundred, the ply movement at station two is seventeen three. So there's a thirty-five thousand dollars in this account. And the proposal to install the system at station two is for seventeen seven, leaving the balance at seventeen three. The reallocation of the balance of these two accounts will be used in conjunction with seventeen ninety-two hundred, the replaced boiler at station ten thousand dollars. So there, you know, basically, Sam said moving, moving around.
I'll make a motion that we pass this to the board of finance?
Okay. Paul Fayer? Okay, John, it seemed like, I think it might be very helpful when the, when the selection request goes to the board of finance, that you might want to be there to answer the kind of questions that you answer right now. I think that would be tremendously helpful.
Yes, sir.
We'll lose something in the, in the translation after you even with the balance.
All right.
Thank you. And thanks, John, for taking the time to explain all this.
Thank you.
Alice, it's our favorite pie. It's tax-free. This is, this is really ritualizing.
Okay, the first one is for Edward and Adeline Nozel. This is for a motor vehicle refund access payment of twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. The next one is motor vehicle for Emma, I'm sorry, Randall and Emma Putnam for seventy-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. And they traded a vehicle in. Marvin Ricardo or Picardo, ninety-eight dollars and thirty-one cents, smaller vehicle. The vehicle was traded in. Donald and Madge Camo, eighty-six ninety-eight for real estate. Donald and Madge Camo, another one, eighty-four... This one is for eighty-four sixty-eight. Donald and Madge Camo, real estate, eighty-two twenty. Don and Madge Camo, real estate, seventy-nine twenty. Don and Madge Camo, real estate, seventy-eight dollars. John or Michelle Guarino, motor vehicle, twenty dollars forty cents. James Saucier, motor vehicle, seventeen ninety. Andre Melinson, six dollars and sixty cents, motor vehicle.
Okay, John, would you accept those? I'll make a motion for... Okay, Paul Fayer? Thank you, Alice. Okay, we have some appointments for the Haddon Park Recreation. Robert Fitzgerald and Anthony Slezzet. Their terms will be from a five-year term extending to September first, two thousand and eighteen. Requests made by Mr. Bowles. Do we have a motion to accept those?
I'll make a motion.
Or figure?
One second.
All right, so some... I want to jump to new business for a second. Well, we know of business, so I don't want to keep this, because we need some discussion on it all. Just brief update on the Tylerville water situation. The DEEP has completed their environmental impact evaluation, which is a long way of saying that they've finally come to some conclusions as to what is a feasible recommendation to make to the town with regard to the water situation in Tylerville. They will be coming out with a public hearing sometime in fall. I've encouraged them to advertise that ahead of time. It'll let folks know, you know, what direction they're going and what they, what they can expect to see. We have been accumulating funds through the State Bond Commission, through STEEP, through the Connecticut Water Company, through the DDH, and we have accumulated what appears to be a significant amount of money that can be contributed to any of the alternatives that the water company, excuse me, the DEEP ultimately indicates and recommends. We are continuing to look deeper to see if we can, the Connecticut Water Company to come to the table with more of a contribution. We're continuing to look deeper with the Department of Public Health to see, to see if we can get them to increase their, their, their money for us as well. By the fall, we will have a clear picture of what can be done in Tylerville, and if any, what the cost will be to the town. So that's where we are at the moment with the water. Phil Miller was nice enough to join us in a meeting that we had last week with DEEP, DPH, OPM, Connecticut Water Company, a couple of engineering firms. And we went over the whole, you know, the whole process. The DEEP has relinquished their responsibility for, for, for filters and for drinking water, provided drinking water filters, bottled water filters, for just about every town except for Tylerville and Hampton. Okay? And so they are walking away from their responsibilities. So our timing on this really could really be better as far as once and for all taking care of that issue. And I want to, I want to emphasize one thing on this. This is a health issue-related problem. It has nothing to do with economic development. In order for us to acquire funds that we are acquiring, we basically are attacking it from a health issue standpoint. Will there be some residual, you know, some people add on storefront, doing something of that nature? Probably. But not, but the purpose of this is to resolve the health issue. Similarly, we've had a meeting tomorrow with the Commissioner of DECD, Catherine Smith. Art Laneras was nice enough to put this meeting together for us with regard to the sewage opportunities in Hickam. We have two possibilities to really attack this. One is a, is to take a line from Middletown, possibly down the tracks, and service the, what is the sewer area, which would be in Village and in Village area, not a one fifty-four. I think, and the other, and the other is a self-contained sewage system, which we like to call the black box, for a, for a development that is on the table now for the Rossi property. Both of these can be handled in a private-public arena, meaning that developers will come to the table, put some money up toward a system that will provide sewage. In Rossi's case, in the self-developed system, a self-contained system, Rossi, McKenna, and one other, I believe, developed, a business owner are willing to make a contribution. That falls, and that falls under a typical public-private arrangement in which DECD will then consider providing funding. Other than that, the only funding that we've got available is to go to the clean, not clean water folks, which is basically very little to grant, mostly, you know, mostly alone. When we did the twenty-five year, excuse me, the long-term plan to see what our infrastructure was about, you remember, we isolated some of these issues and how much we thought we could handle, or how much we thought we might be, might be coming up to us in the way of grants and the way of funding, and then how much we would have to tackle in the way of self-funding ourselves. And for the sewer, we're looking at really getting three, three and a half million dollars, and, you know, from somebody else. If, 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 this goes down with the public-private arrangement, we might even get better. We might even be much more than that. So the meeting I have tomorrow is to throw it on the table and to let them know what we want to do with invigorating Hickam Center as a community, as a, as a village, as a region, as a group of businessmen and the business people that are coming together for the benefit of the community. It is exactly the kind of thing that DECD has been preaching for a very long time.
Same, heard this for...
Yep, exactly. It's exactly...
Nothing's changed, yeah. It's like, you know, those are the two options we've had. You know, it just, it seemed, it seemed to have gone forward, so.
Well, this is encouraging. This is encouraging, because for the first time, we may be able to get an endorsement from the commissioner to go ahead and proceed this way. See, other than that, what we're doing is we're playing ladders. We're making applications, we're doing grants, we're doing this, we're talking to individuals.
Yeah.
The whole thing of all, exactly. So this is a good opportunity to get them to come to the table and say, yeah, look, we support this kind of activity for you. Now, they've done this, I mean, they've done this on a larger scale, you know, and the stores operation that they have there, the manseville, I don't know about that. I mean, that is, you know, that's a magnificent, typical public-private kind of thing. So that's what we're meeting about tomorrow, and I'm really hopeful that we'll get her support, and that she'll hold our hand in walking us through whatever has to be done to move this issue forward. The reception has been great from the, from the developers who want to, who want to provide sewage for that area. This reception has been great from the mayor of Middletown and from legislation of the Middletown, who are having trouble as you go with, with problem and the man's asset situation. They would like nothing better than to get, you know, a couple million extra gallons of shit. So we're, you know, we're, we're not in a bad place with this for the first time in a while, and I'm very hopeful, so I'll let you guys know how this goes.
Hopefully, there's a fair...
Okay, now, the third thing I've got for whole businesses, the Echo Center, which the developer has to undertake, they, their due diligence on the, on the environmental conditions. And they met with us and indicated that they do want to go forward to close the, close the arrangement late August or early September. So it seems like you have more from you on that, I will probably let you know.
It's all in the contract, I think.
Yeah, it's all in the contract. Right? Keep it posted.
Yeah.
Okay. New business, the state of Connecticut has come up with a new plan. I gave you a copy of this, take a peek at. It's a master contract agreement for construction projects. In the past, excuse me. In the past, meantime in Tylerville, I've been involved with a, with a major construction project. They had to go through and have a separate contract for that, for that particular project. They came to the conclusion that all these things are pretty much the same as far as, as far as what they need to, that they'll require from the town, so they're able to deliver. So they came up with a master contract, which basically puts the language out there for the town to accept or entertain, and the order to propel this contract. And in order to propel this contract, they put in what they call PAL, which is a performance approval letter, I think it is, or procedure, procedure letter, it's called. And so instead of sending the whole contract, every town will get done, they're just going to send out these formal letters. I'd like Bruno to take a look at. And his response is there, as you've asked me to review. The above agreement, including schedule B, which outlines certain specifics and immune contract improvements to locally maintain roadways, structures, transportation, enhancement facilities that are eligible for government financial assistance from the Department of Transportation. Essentially, the contract is between the town and the State Department of Transportation. Contract applies to any construction project where there is Department of Transportation administered state and federal financial assistance for the project. Town agrees to not award any contract for a construction project without the first obtaining authorization from the Department of Transportation. The contract is very specific as to the steps the town must take before an authorization to proceed is given by the Department of Transportation. This includes any modifications or supplements to contracts. You have not asked me for an exhaustive review of the agreement, so I won't go into more specifics. Suffice it to say, in any applicable construction project being considered by this town, the master agreement, the schedule A, the must be looked at, you know, there too. So, that's the good news. And all I need is from you guys to sign this resolution to accept that contract if we have construction projects that come to us that we will require state financial aid.
You guys signed it. Is Bruno, is he going to get back to the specifics?
No, this is, this is, yeah. And this is for all one hundred and sixty-nine towns.
Which is agreed, you're saying, we agree.
Yeah. No, we don't have any projects, no.
No project?
Yeah.
We have a project, we agree, we don't worry.
Yeah. And that actually is a good idea because if we're telling you it's extremely efficient, the contractual arrangements for the time handings of projects of a long time. All right, Paul Zayer? Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. All right, and we are down to Paul's office.
Yep. Patrick, I'll start with the signs. Indeed, I need to question it. I just want to remind selecting Duval, Mr. Duval, that the nine-town transit is a company transportation service for which I think our town is paying fifty thousand dollars towards each year. And I think the town should put those signs back or at least help the company put those signs back as service provided to our residents. It allows transportation from Paul Zero to Middletown to Norwich, take a train or anything else. I mean, it helps the seniors as well. I'm kind of shocked that one complaint would force the town to put down some signs.
Well, it was, the complaint indicated, in looking into the complaint, it was obvious that no permits were acquired to get the signs up. So the nine-town transit, whether they knew they had to get permits or not, I don't know. But they didn't have a proper permit to it. So therefore, the resident did have illegal play.
I think I'm going to have a filled day with a lot of signs in the town.
Yeah, you know, that's something that's very important, that's something that we...
I mean, these church signs that were put up at the corner of jail and one fifty-four, they're asking for a permit. Then you should go after all the signs that don't have a permit.
I'll be glad to, at some point in time, to let you know, since they're just naming one.
I see this more and more. On the... WFS, on stipulations, we paid a lot of money, by the way. And the first date that had to be looked at was June first, two thousand thirteen. It looks like nothing happened by June first, two thousand thirteen. And it says in the agreement that if for any reason there is not full compliance with such wetlands permit, we talked about the code right now. By that date, the following penalties shall apply. There's no if or buts. There are penalties, there are fines. And I have a couple of questions about that. And I know that Bruno is supposed to talk to me, and he's not going to talk to me, but he said Bruno should talk to me. But at least there's a question I think you should be able to answer. Did anyone check on this on June first, two thousand thirteen?
Yes, Jacobson's been following this closely and has a various field reports as to the status of this in Ranley through by June thirteenth. And it was moving, you know, it was moving. We had Jacobson, who was the monitor of it, was reviewing. I have various field reports of the process. It, you know, did we pull, did anybody pull the cord on him June second, two thousand thirteen, because it wasn't done?
No.
But...
The question is, why? Why not? Who made a decision not to pull the cord?
The decision not to pull, there was no decision not to pull the cord. It just didn't, it just, the thing wasn't being done, apparently, according to Jacobson's field.
Right, but at that point, Bruno should have been notified. Something should have happened. And nothing happened. I'm just wondering, what was the breakdown?
I don't know if there was a breakdown or not. And I, to be honest with you, I'll have to take a look. And I do think, though, that the stipulation is a very precise document. And you're absolutely right, there are fines involved, and those fines should be looked at.
I'll wait for Bruno to give you that.
Yeah, okay.
And then my third comment has to do with the fire station boiler. I understand, is this the propane you're talking about? So the town has decided to mix fuels.
On this...
The one, yes. No, I mean in general, because you went out for bids for fuel, now you're going to switch to propane. You know, nothing gets propane, but you're going to have to coordinate, I think it's...
Yeah, this is a unique situation, is that we're not going to do propane tower wire.
Okay, then number two. Usually, when we have things like this, we go to bids, or at least we look to go to bids. Is this going to go to bid?
No, this was RFQ, that I believe was done through, versus the RFP. When you put on a typical project, a construction project, or a municipal contract, it's done through your request for proposals. When you have only certain people that can do a specific job that you have, that you feel extremely qualified for, then the RFQ basically takes precedence. In this particular case, Sam, correct me if I'm wrong, there are too many people to do this and...
Correct, he's the only vendor we found locally that deals with that KMC computer system that's been in the building since we've been in there. And he knows the system very well. I'm sure there are other vendors that could certainly supply a boiler, but integrated into our system that's in the building. I think that's, you know, why we've, you know, look to keep with the vendor we've been using.
I also don't think that that question is over, right? If it comes back to the board of finance approving. It could possibly, it could possibly go to that, right? It's not an automatic...
They're just trying to get the money, the good profit.
It's just a proposal. I don't know if this is a contract for that individual to do it or not.
There is no contract signed to do anything at this point because we don't have the funding to do this.
Hopefully, we'll come back from the board of finance.
I mean, it doesn't seem, there seems to be a disconnect between the fire department and the board in terms of who goes for bids and stuff like that. And I think that's...
It's a good point.
So I think, I don't know about this connect.
I think that the fire department has a unique situation where they have relationships with experienced people who can only do certain things. We have similar situations with other contracts, where you're RFQ. I mean, who's qualified to do this? And they have individuals that they have already vetted qualifications. It would be, you know, as we put on our regular bids for proposals, we don't necessarily take the lowest bids.
I didn't say that. I said that you make some bids, you just go around and see how much the boiler's a cost with different companies.
I think that they are, I think that they absolutely should do that, absolutely.
And I've been such a issued request before sending it to the board of finance, so I'm saying...
Well, these are monies to be moved around for this project. Okay, it's not, so what they're doing is they're taking it, and if the board of finance agrees, they're going to move the boiler out to facilitate this project. And then when we go from there, is when we go from there. Okay. This name?
I just have a couple of quick things. You brought up the ecotourism center, which reminded me that every time I drive by there, there's two boats, huge boats, at least two, parked in there. Do you know whose those are and why they're on town property?
They are...
They're residual.
From, yeah.
Previously occupied and so there, but when they left, they just left them.
Yeah.
And in our previous sale, it was going to get cleaned up.
Yeah.
And that sale fell through. Now we've got a new buyer.
Yeah, I think he's going to clean them up.
And he's going to clean them up.
Okay. They're not sellable at all? Get any money?
No, we had Robbins take a look at one of them and see if he was getting anything. No, they're not.
No?
They're been there ten years.
Yeah.
Okay. And then I just had a question about the WFS assessment. If you know anything new about that.
As I understand, you've been talking with the assessor at the Great Line?
I just went up again yesterday, or two days ago. But I had brought this up in February. I'm just wondering if there's anything new, if you know more. She just, she didn't know, yet.
Well, I think she knows, but she's doing her due diligence. This is a unique situation where a lot of legal aspects have to be looked at. And I think she's doing her due diligence, you know, to make sure that the answer that she comes up with is one that is correct and fair. And that's basically where it is now.
Okay. And also, just for the record, because I have been researching this as well, and obviously, I'm not an assessor, but if you take the Haynes property down in Deep River, also a sand pit gravel mine, they are assessed at double, their property is assessed at double ours. Thirty thousand, more than thirty thousand dollars an acre. Where we, even on the part that's assessed higher, the thirty-two acre piece, it's only assessed at fifteen thousand an acre. And this is a six million dollar a year sand pit operation. So just for the record, I'd like to state that. And I might bring that up to Marilyn, the assessor as well. But I just think that we could get more money out of a sand pit of more, almost double the acreage.
What I would suggest, if you have a concern, is to recommend that the assessor, whoever did the assessment of Deep River, touch base and compare notes. There, at the end of the day, the assessors have an extremely close-knit relationship. Their association is very good, very tight. They all, I think, work along the same lines with regard to the responsibilities, the statutes. And I think that in most cases, their communication is really extremely good. So I mean, if you see a situation that is identified with Miss Hartford, or West Haven, or Deep River, or whatever, I mean, it's amazing how they will collect their ideas together and talk and say, did you know, perhaps, the situation that, you know, you might have mentioned? And there's a lot of enlightenment that goes on throughout these associations and so on. So that may be, you know, a way of taking a look at it.
I will bring it up with her. Yeah, the interesting thing about that, what you just mentioned about the close-knit relationship, is that we had two yellow book appraisals done on, and don't want to bring up the land swap again, but on our seventeen acres over there, that were over a million and a half dollars. We currently still have it assessed at only four hundred something.
Yellow book?
Yellow, these are federally, these are the strictest appraisals you can imagine.
Well, you know, I don't want to get into, you know, appraisals because I really don't know what the difference between the yellow book and what the, how we're going to go with the appraisal. I do know this, that they worked extremely hard to assess all the properties in Haddon to be as fair as possible. I think the issue that you had there, that particular property, was vacillating over many, many years and with a lot of different reasons for this. I, you know, I don't know what the answer is. But I do know that the assessor has worked extremely hard on all of our properties to be as fair and as deliberate as possible.
I do also want to add for the record, since we're on this, is that I know for a fact that Vision appraisal did not, during our revale, did not visit every single property, which I think is a major flaw in either their system or our system or somebody's system. And I think that should be looked at when we go to revale again because that's a major problem.
Well, if we go to revale again, or only go to revale again, we will not be looking at every property. It'd be, my understanding is it's a different process. Since this one was exhausted, the next process, and again, I'd have to see what the assessor's approach is on this. My understanding is that it's not another complete one-hundred percent, you know, evaluation kind of thing.
All right, well, I at least think that they look at the properties that are worth more than a million dollars. That's a big chunk of change. So that was, that was one of the properties that was not even looked at by Vision.
You know, I don't know, did...
No, I know that for a fact.
But I do think that, you know, Vision overall seem to be, they have a very fine reputation. They've done a lot of regional towns that we participate in council governance with. I've met with them individually on other, they seem extremely experienced. When we did go off to bid, we did examine their qualifications. You know, is anybody capable of being one-hundred and ten percent? Yeah, I don't know. But I do know that overall, our assessors were pleased with the result.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Melanie?
Yes, I can just spectate it.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for being here. Sam, thanks very much for taking the time. You know, I have a motion...